All right. Well, if you close, you close. Thank you very much. Oh, great. Okay.
Do you have a statement you'd like to make at the beginning? Or did you have other...
Yeah.
Could we, if it's our issue, if you can make a statement at the beginning of the meeting, at least to talk a little bit about what's going on, putting this thing together.
Okay. Okay. Are we ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
We're going to call this meeting to order. It's a workshop to discuss the new revised merit rules and how we're going to do things going forward. So, to start, I'd like to ask Ken Cunningham to come and make an opening statement.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. When we decided to do the personnel policies or revise the personnel policies, we started with a draft that was left over from the previous HR director and then a representative from ASAP, Doug Mueller. They drafted part of it, and then we formed a committee with Mike Hendricks's approval of 10 managers, and then we received input from managers throughout the county on the draft personnel policies. We had some objectives that we wanted to do with these policies. One, we wanted to put all the policies in one place. Right now, we have policies in several different places. We have 11-1, we have the merit rules, and then we have, like, the travel policy or the car policy, an employee who wasn't able to find everything in one spot. So, that was part of our goal, is to bring as much stuff into one place that we could. The other philosophy that we had was we were letting managers have more control of their departments. They wouldn't have to, where HR wouldn't dictate what they had to do, the managers had more control over their departments. With HR having a little bit of oversight and just making sure that the state labor laws were being followed, and then the county administrator would have the final, final rule over any disputes between HR and any manager. And one of the big things that we wanted with the policies is make them easier to understand, because right now, in the merit rules and stuff, you have contradictory statements. You can read one statement in the merit rule, and then you read another one, and they contradict each other, and so you don't know which one to follow. So, we were trying to make them easier to understand, take out the duplicate information, and consolidate them so our line staff can read them and understand without trying to get someone to interpret them for them. So, that was the goal that we set down for this project. In the project, there are some major changes, and there's other changes where we just need to clean up processes, and so, like I says, we were just trying to make it easier for the line staff, the managers to manage their departments, and for the rest of us to understand and implement any changes that were coming through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
How, what is the process we're going to do? Each supervisor makes a statement, or how do we want to do this?
Madam Chair, I'm not certain how you would like me to make my comments on the merit rules, because I could, I can take 20 minutes and go through some of my suggestions, or I can wait till the end, and/or I can just say I'm glad we're meeting here, and I'm glad the public has a chance to watch this. They get the, what, the making sausage, I think is the political terms.
Does anybody have, like, just a statement about merit rules in general?
I believe the merit rules do need to be done. Over the last month or so, there has been some confusion that we need to alleviate, and I think addressing that in the merit rules and cleaning them up is a very important task, and so I'd like to thank County Administrator Hendricks and Mr. Cunningham for taking a bite at this apple. I know that they were, had this dropped on them just a few months ago, and where a previous administration had sat on them for years, they had to get things done in a couple months, and I do appreciate it. I do have some changes, but I'll result, or suggestions, but I'll hold back on those until we get into the meat and potatoes of this meeting.
Okay. I'm just happy that the county is looking at the merit rules. I've lived with the merit rules for some 30 years, so I'm pretty familiar with them, and I know there are contradictions, and I'm looking forward to fixing or maybe sending them out to another company to look at, like we did with our county ordinances. So, I think any improvement is an improvement, so I look forward to going forward.
Okay. Supervisor Watson?
No comment.
No comment. Okay. Um, you know, again, I think the merit rules and the whole sort of system of government is antiquated, and I think that since we're redoing everything and have this opportunity, that perhaps we should really look to restructure and reorganize the complete way we do business. And I don't want to scare anyone, nothing would happen overnight, you know, nothing. I mean, this is just a start of a reevaluation of the way governments do business. In 2012, the state passed HB 2571 for the state of Arizona, and I had asked my assistant, Karen, to just sort of put together an overall summary of what that meant. And it was, I wasn't following it at the time, but apparently our governor, Brewer, this was a landmark piece for that year for her. She worked very hard to get that done, because I think that she saw what a lot of people see is a very difficult way of doing business, of the way that our employees are hired and compensated, and she wanted to make it easier for governments to change things. You know, we all have seen, and we see it here, how difficult it is to get things done. And in my book, any way to get that done easier would be an improvement. I'm gonna just give these out, and this is the summary, and this is one piece of it, of the merit rules, and this is about the way we hire and compensate people. And there is a whole now blueprint, the, some of the state agencies, I'm not sure if they chose it or they were forced to, but I know for a fact that Arizona Game and Fish completely changed the way they do business, from going from a, you know, the classified and unclassified system to, I don't want to say completely at-will, because it's never going to be completely at-will, you have law enforcement, and there are exceptions, but they move, they're moving over to an at-will, where people are hired, and they're at-will, and they're compensated based on their merit, and department heads can have more flexibility in how they hire and fire. And then we can also take a look at compensation. We have a big problem here in Mojave County with untaken PTO, and that's something that I know has been on the minds of several supervisors for years, even before we came on, and I'm hoping that during this process, we can take a look at that. I, I don't want to bring EBT into it, that's another thing, but there are things that are happening beyond our control out there as well, and we best be prepared for it. So, as we go for that, I don't see this process as being, okay, we're going to take this, we're going to look, we're going to make some little changes and be done with it. I see this as an opportunity to restructure county government, and that's my statement.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I would like to commend Ken for, ever since we hired him, he's been a shining star for us, and I believe it was a very good buy for Mojave County, and Ken took on the challenge of placing this document together, and along with all the rest of the people who were on the committee, and they're all sitting out here, and I really appreciate all your hard work and effort, because they were doing daily meetings to try to get this done in a timely manner for the Board of Supervisors, for your consideration. The document does deserve a read, because it's important for us to understand how we currently do business, how we think we want to do business, and then have the board impart your philosophy on what you would like to see, and I appreciate Chairman Angus sharing with us part of her philosophy, because that's, that gives staff the direction that we need to actually provide you what you need to administer this county. So, with that said, I believe we have a document that is very comprehensive. I believe the document meets the laws of the state and of the federal government in regards to, to human resources. It may not reflect your philosophy. So, I know in a workshop environment and situation, it makes it a little difficult on staff, because the board can't give staff direction, and I believe one of my responsibilities is to try to come up with a way to be able to compile your all's philosophy and be able to impart that. You had a extremely, you touched on an extremely good suggestion. I believe we don't have a redundant document, we've got a really solid document that says the right things and maybe doesn't impart the right philosophy, or it may, in certain areas. And it may be a time when we look to the outside to pull everything together, and I would try to come up with a mechanism so that you all can agree on a philosophy to move forward with, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And again, I want to thank everyone that was on the committee. I know how much hard work went into this, and I hope you don't take what I said as being any, anything else, but just, you know, another sort of direction that I've been thinking about, and, but we're going to, this is a great start of a document, and this is the one we're gonna, we're gonna start with. Okay? You want to start?
I guess I'll...
Madam Chairman, thank you. I'll guess I'll start. I will apologize for being boring in advance, and then when I'm done, I'll apologize again. I'm going to start on page three of the draft. There was a couple's comments I had regarding that. On page three of the draft, for example, in the second paragraph, there's a reuse of the phrase "department head," which is thankfully a defined term at the back of the merit rules, but it also defined partner, partner, or department heads as elected officials. I was going back to page 149, "Department Head: The Single Administrative Head, Elected or Appointed, Responsible for Directing and Coordinating the Functions of a Department Which May Be Comprised of One or More Divisions." Period. "The Department Head is the appointing authority for the department." I was concerned by the use of elected officials as department heads. I was hoping for some clarification on that. I don't view myself as a department head. I view myself as the supervisor for District Five of Mojave County, Arizona.
And Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, absolutely, and you're absolutely correct to point that out. We did a considerable struggle on coming up with words, so we weren't constantly saying "elected officials" and "department heads," and stringing it out so that we were repetitive and cumbersome and bureaucratic throughout the whole deal. So, what we did was we tried to define certain terms throughout this document to where we could use a simplified "department head" to mean an all-encompassing. And so, we said, if you're in charge of a department, whether you're an elected official or a non-elected official, we would consider you, for the purposes of these merit rules, a department head.
And I, that makes sense, what you said. My concern is, we're kind of implying, then, that the elected officials, whether it's Carol Meyer, the recorder, or Ron Nicholson, or us, that were covered by these merit rules, and I don't think that's necessarily the case. I think that we're elected officials, and we're accountable to the voters, not to a stack of rules that have been generated by the county administration and approved by the Board of Supervisors. So, I think so maybe some tweaking of that language may be appropriate, and I'm just throwing that there as my first suggestion.
And Supervisor Angus, I mean Chairman Angus, Supervisor Moss, I've got extremely talented staff that sat here, and they were in on those particular meetings. If it pleases the board, I would like to, if they have answers to some of your questions, to allow them to chime, chime in, because I know we addressed that, and I believe we did make a clear separation between elected officials and department heads somewhere in there. I could be mistaken, but that was my intent. If we didn't, we should.
There are some separation languages here and there scattered throughout the merit rules, but when you use department heads throughout the merit rules, unless you, you're saying also "elected officials" every time you say "department heads." And that's why I was thinking that, even though I understand the difficulty with that, maybe a statement to the lines of that, and I'm just throwing this out there as an idea, the merit rules do not apply to the elected officials, period. The merit rules do apply to the elected officials' conduct or interactions with their employees, something along those lines.
Okay.
And that way, you could back it out completely, and that's just an idea.
That's a great, great idea. Madam Chairman, if, if I could, and if one or more of my panel has any questions, could Ken address you as Madam Chairman? And then, then direct one of his channel...
Absolutely. You can call me Hilden. You don't have to do that, but just make sure that whoever speaks, speaks into the mic, because it's his stream live, and, oops, I've been... Reprimanded for not having my microphone on at all times.
I think he'll get you.
Madam Chair, if I may, may make a suggestion. I appreciate Supervisor Moss's comments, and just a suggestion, to the, the department head, as a title, is used throughout the document, so to define it properly upfront is very important, and to go along with Supervisor Moss's definition. In addition, what he said before, maybe just said, the department head is defined as elected officials that manage departments and department directors appointed by the board, something like that.
That, that would work, just as long as there's a clear statement that these merit rules apply to employees, but not the elected officials. So, that's what I'm looking for there. Going on in the paragraph...
Excuse me, Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
Later on the merit rules, it describes who is covered under the merit rules, and department heads are described as unclassified employees, so all the merit rules do not apply to them, but it helps them to manage their employees, and I believe that was the intent of it.
I, I understand the intent, and it's a good intent, but I just want, for clarification's sake, I'm a lawyer, and I see department head, which includes the defined term "elected officials." I'm thinking, okay, now we're trying to subject, you know, Matt Smith, the county attorney, elected county attorney, to these, he's better to answer to us if he violates the rules. So, I think that, and we, and he's not classified, because we can't fire him. It's the voters' jobs to fire him. So, I think a little bit of clarification there would be important. Next, going on to the county administration responsibilities, there's some commentary regarding minor, non-substantive amendments to the personnel policies and procedures can be made by the county administrator if recommended by the human resources director. I'm very uncomfortable with that. When it comes to my definition of minor, and Ken Cunningham's definition of minor, will vary by the week, and depending on who wants to get the upper hand in a debate. So, I really think that all proposed changes to merit rules, with minor or otherwise, need to come back to the Board of Supervisors for review and approval. Going on into that same paragraph, and this is just something I threw out there as an idea, I'm not really sure, this is the last paragraph on page three, I'm not, and by the way, I don't have these lengthy commentary on each and every pages, so it does get better, trust me. That the county administrator, there's an appeal process when it comes to people who are aggrieved, and they can bring it to the county administrator for final determination. I did not know whether we wanted to have that final determination vested in the Board of Supervisors. I'm of two minds about it. One, I don't want to be bothered by employees every time they say, hey, you ding me, because I was a minute over on my time clock, wasting my time, when Mike handled it, and Ken Cunningham handled it, and everyone else handled it. On the other hand, there might be some issues that I really want to know about, and I wouldn't know about if they wasn't brought to my attention. So, that's, I'm not saying one way or the other on it. I'm six of one, half dozen of the other on the particular point, but that's just some thoughts. Going on to page four, there's a statement that the human resources director with the concurrence of the county attorney's office, civil division, may make legally mandated minor, non-substantive amendments to the personnel policies, which should be reported to the human resources director, to the county administrator. And I go back to my original comment, I think if it's legally mandated, it'll be made, but it should be brought to the Board of Supervisors, so we know what changes are being made to what are effectively our merit rules. And I don't want to get into a debate on what's minor and what's not minor.
Madam Chairman, one of the things that has come to my mind, that, from your concerns and previous concerns, not just today, is that possibly there could be a reporting requirement to where we could, we could make these legal changes, or we could make these minor amendments if they were adequately reported on the county managers, county administrators' report at the board meeting, just so long as the pertinent information, like, like names, addresses, or so forth and so on, were redacted. But I could certainly, I tried to think of a reporting structure to where you all would be kept informed of those types of activities, and that may be an avenue to provide that to you.
And I have no problem with, personally speaking, other supervisors may have other opinions, putting it on the consent agenda, including in the county manager's report, which is on the consent agenda, just as long as we're made aware of it. So, believe it or not, I will occasionally read your reports, Mike.
And Madam Chairman, just... And Madam Chairman, just a philosophical recommendation from me, is there is, there is some benefit of not having the Board of Supervisors in the chain of authority over personnel issues. You know, just so you know of them, and you certainly control my activities. If you are in the chain of authority over those personnel activities, it throws you into the fray, and you're subject to any calls by the merit commission, or if it goes, if an issue goes to court, or is challenged, you're sitting right there up front, and it may be something that's, you may not want it to occur, and it's worked well for the task boards not to have that responsibility. So if I had it on my county manager's report, you could call me on it, but you wouldn't be in the decision-making tree and subject to all those downfalls that I would be subject to.
And that would probably split the two issues that I had, because I agree with you. I don't want to be involved in personnel matters, but I also like to know what's going on in the county and what disputes are. If I see a trend of employees getting in trouble for X, Y, or Z, that sort of thing. And maybe by just putting a reference that, those things will be reported to the board by the county administrator, that would be sufficient for my concerns. Other board members may have other issues there.
Now, I agree, as long as it's in the county administrator's report.
That's fine with me, yeah. Going on to number five, there's two terms used, one is employees, and the other is division managers. They were not included on the defined terms. And I think maybe they should be, because in my view, department heads are classified employees, or, excuse me, they're at-will employees, we can let them go. My personal opinion is that division managers should also be in that category.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, are division managers in that category technically?
At-will employees.
At-will employees, unclassified?
Not right now.
Okay, let's note that. Thank you.
So I think that we need to clarify that. And I, basically, I think if you're in a supervisory capacity in Mojave County, Arizona, I believe Supervisor Angus wants to go further, and I support her in that. But at a minimum, we need to get the supervisory people in the at-will employees, because if your supervisors are essentially shielded by their due process rights and all the rest of that you have, because you have a proprietary interest in your job, they're going to have a difficult time being held accountable. It's a philosophical issue for me. I'll make it simple here. And the people on the street, I agree with Supervisor Angus, but if we can't get that done, I'd like to get at least the supervisors taken care of. Now, when it comes to, so that's page five, going on to page seven, paragraph 1.21, regarding the recruitment and selection process, capital A allows the department head to decide whether a vacant position is going to be designated, county employees open, only rather, or open to the public. In my opinion, all job vacancies should be open to the public unless approved by the Board of Supervisors otherwise. So that's my philosophical issue there, is the public has a right to know if a job opening is with the county, and we shouldn't have closed department hirings unless there's a good reason for it. And I think the Board of Supervisors should be the one approving that good reason.
May I ask something?
Yeah, sure.
What is the reason behind that?
For the supervisors, the current merit rules have three options. They have county only, they have open to the public, and then they have departmental only. We wanted to take off the department only, because that's when that a manager could pre-select. If they make it department only, then if you have a department of three, you're only given the option to two employees. If you make it countywide, which has to show up on our job board for at least five days, countywide is every employee in the county. So, for instance, when we got rid of the department, if we had someone, let's say in the treasurer's department, who left and wanted to come back, if they made it department only, that employee could not come back. So that's why we made it countywide, so it opens it up to 1,200 employees. And I know, like the sheriff's department, they like to promote from within, their sergeants, their lieutenants. So they post theirs departmental only to give promotional rights, because you have to know the system to be promoted. So those are some of the reasons why we have county-only postings.
Why department-only?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's, my speaker wasn't on. I got to apologize. I understand why they might prefer that, but if there's a job opening, I really think people should have a right to apply to it, unless there's a reason for it. If, you know, Sheriff McCabe says, there's only three people I want to promote to this position, or only one person I want to promote to this position, can you make this department only, or county employees only, I think we as a board would say, yes. But we want to, part of our job, I think, as elected officials, is to serve as a watchdog, the public's watchdog. And I don't like the idea that there's a small recruiting pool, which we don't know has been either contracted or expanded, without us knowing the rhyme or reason why, as to that's occurring. And I really think, and my personal philosophy, all postings should be open to the public unless the Board of Supervisor approves as a county employees only. And all it takes is putting it on the consent agenda. If supervisors want to pull it, then we can have a discussion, but at least we would see the backup data. We would vote on it as a board, that's fine. And I would imagine, and many of the things I'm suggesting did occur at the Colorado River Union High School District. We approved every hire, every fire, every modification. That was in place before I got on the board. It was always on the consent agenda, and in eight years, I think we maybe discussed two positions. It's not really that big of a, big of a deal. It's just, I want to know what's happening within the county, because I think that's what the county voters put us in place here for.
May, Madam Chairman, may I make a suggestion? Our philosophy in drafting this, one of the things that Ken didn't touch on, but it was in the forefront, is we don't penalize county employees for being county employees. So when they hire into another position, they should be able to hire in based on their knowledge and experience, not based on some arcane matrix that limits our ability, and we're not able to hire that individual in as high or as well-compensated as somebody with less or the same experience from the outside. With that said, what's your suggestion would make that even more fair? If we opened every job up to the outside, then it would provide greater justification to treat our, not penalize our county employees. And I would support, of course, anything the board decides to move forward with.
Thank you for that.
But unless there's a compelling reason not to do so, I would certainly encourage the board to give us the direction of opening up all jobs to the public. That way, there's no human reason to not treat our county employees fairly.
And this is just me thinking, if you have a particular employee on mine, we're not deciding, yeah, I'm sorry, we're not deciding who the department head hires, that's up to the department head. But the department head should look at all options, not just the option that they're used to. Now, if there's a good reason, bring it to us, and we'll make it, we should make it, of the county employees only. But that should be, the county employees only should be the exception, not the rule.
See, and to expand on that a little bit, what we used to do in the past is if an employee wasn't competitively hired, then they fell into that matrix, because it wasn't fair to give them the moon. If they were competitively hired, then they should be hired in based on their knowledge and experience. Do you see any downside, Ken, to opening up everything to the public? And if there is any exception, bringing it to the board, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Legally, I don't see anything. It actually opens it up to a wider spread. Like I said, in our current rules and what we propose, the jobs have to be open for five days anyway. So if the manager is considering internals, it's still open to five, for five days, and they can get inside-outside applicants. So there is really no downside, except a bigger pool of people coming in.
More opportunity.
At 1.22, paragraph A, it says, "Job vacancy announcements shall be posted upon a department's request." Going along, I think all job vacancy announcements should be posted on the county website, not just upon a department head's request. And that's the easiest way, I think, in the modern digital age, to communicate with the world. So if there's a job opening, it should be on the county website. Related to that, on paragraph C, we have the five days, five business days that Mr. Cunningham referenced. I'm not really sure, five days, and I'm okay with five days. I was just thinking to myself, is that really enough time for people to get there? So I was thinking 10 days, but I'm okay with five, too. But that's the time limit, whether five days is sufficient or not. I had a bit of a concern with that.
I would have to agree with you on the 10 days. I struggle with that short period of time also. So let's make it, let's make it 10 days.
My thing, if someone goes on vacation for a week, they're going to miss it, is what it comes down to. So anyways, that's not there.
Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
If I can clarify, 1.22A, is that, that is just to say that the department head decides when they post it. Not that they, every job has to be posted, but it's for the department manager's request. Maybe they don't want to post it for a month, two months, and it's saying that HR cannot dictate that that job will be posted. It's up to the department head to tell HR to post it. That's what that is meaning.
And thank you for that clarification, but that tells me also subsection A needs to be clarified, because when I read it, and I think of the reading of it, says it gets posted if a department head requests it. Not that all jobs are posted, because the word "all" is missing from there, and it should be clarified, I think, a little bit.
So let's go. "All job vacancy announcements shall be posted on the county website per department's request." Something along that line.
Right. Or on dates or times selected by the department head, something along those lines. But just to clarify that, everything goes up there. The department head can control the timing, but not the fact that it goes up there.
And it goes along hand-in-hand with posting, opening jobs to the outside?
Yes, thank you. That's not that important. Let's see. Now, this, page 11, goes to one of the, it's paragraph N at the very top of the page, where it says, "Only the Board of Supervisors has the authority to create and budget a new position." I'm not really sure how to handle this, but I think the merit rules should be clarified that promotions, and I don't see, for example, going from a patrolman to a sergeant as a new job, the guy just got promoted, but that's a personal caveat I have. But whether it's a promotion, a reclassification, whatever, I think those need to be brought to us and be put on the consent agenda or the county manager's report, and then finally approved by us, because it does create a long-term change in the county's budgetary cycle. It may not affect things for that year, because it's paid for for that year, but that is going to have to be repaid for year after year after year after year. And that's, let me see, going down to 1.26, page 11.
Excuse me, Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
I just need a little bit of clarification, because you said promotion. Most of our promotions, if you have all jobs posted, they're competitively given?
And if that's the way it is, that's the way it is. I'm not going to get into that internal dynamic, but if there have been, so there's some, I would say if it's a promotion or reclassification, you folks take care of it. You just report it to us, perhaps part as the county manager's report. And only if we have a question, would we ever bring it up, ever. But at least we would know that-
It happened.
Yeah, Madame Smith, or whatever Misses Smith, or Mr. Jones, got promoted, and I'll say, I know that guy, he's the worst guy in the world. Why did we do that? Mike, what's going on here? So it's, that's an idea. Or he's the greatest guy in the world, why are we giving him, or lady in the world, why are we giving him so little? You know, so that's, it could go either way. 1.26, on page 11, it says, "Hiring of an employee who's related to an existing employee within change of command must be approved by the county administrator." I think that needs to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. It must carry the recommendation of the county administrator, but ultimately, it needs to be brought to the Board of Supervisors.
That was discussed. And the old merit rules actually had it, had those things approved by the board, and they all went to the board. So we could certainly revert. The reason that we didn't do that is we tried to second-guess, think, well, you know, it's such a common thing, and they have to comply with certain requirements. They can't be in the direct line of charge of the relative. So we thought that that may be something minor that didn't, shouldn't go to the board, but I see your point.
It's just that-
If you want to go back, we can.
Yeah, it could potentially carry the inference of impropriety, not that it was improper. But I want people to know, the public to know, yeah, the Board of Supervisors looked at it, and there wasn't an issue. You know, so that's my, keeping the faith in the public with us and the county, because we are the face of the county, really, I think is important. Page 13, and this is me, and I'm sorry, Bob, this is me being a nitpicking, but it constantly refers to employees don't have the ability to appeal to the Mojave County Merit Commission. Why don't we use the word "right"? They don't have the right to appeal to the Mojave County Merit Commission. Because I can file an appeal. I have the physical ability to file an appeal with whatever, whoever I want. It doesn't mean I have the right for them to consider it. So it's just, that's a nitpicking thing on my part.
Yeah, just the language.
Yeah, and it's not important. It's just me being a nitpicker.
Okay.
Question about-
Yes.
Supervisor Moss, I have a question on that. Are you, are you referring to number two? I think the only one that says they don't have the right to appeal are considered at-will employees.
No, it's with, paragraphs one, on page 13, 1.3A, one, two, and three refer to the ability to appeal.
Yeah, but it refers to at-will employees.
And that should be the right to appeal, not the ability.
I'm saying, I agree with the concept. I don't agree with the word choice, or I'm nitpicking the word choice.
All right.
Okay. On page 16, this is maybe some confusion on my part, 1.52, paragraph B, "Unclassified employees are at-will employees and are covered by the personnel policy procedure of the counties, except when dealing with due process appeals, grievance, and employment decisions." I was less than clear with the "except," because it sounds like now they do have a right to their job with that "except" clause.
Oh, I'm sorry. It might be a legal issue. Ken?
Yeah, it's, I don't know. It's 1.52, paragraph B, page 16. It's the "except" clause that I'm looking at, because it makes it sound like then they're really not at-will employees.
Well, what we were trying to do, Supervisor Moss, is that we were trying to make sure that there's parts of this personnel policies that at-will employees must abide by, but then there's sections of this, the grievance process and stuff, that at-will employees do not qualify for. So if they're terminated, they have no rights to go to the merit commission.
Right.
That was disintended for.
Thank you for that explanation. It reassures me. But I think the language choice really says, you know, if you take it as two parts, it says, one, you're at-will, and everyone understands what that means, you know, you better perform or else. And then, but there's that caveat, that comma calling the "except," so you're not really at-well. You're at-will "except" when dealing with A, B, C, D, and E. So maybe it should be broken up into two sentences to clarify that. It's just, it's just an English language choice, I think, which may cause confusion.
Yeah, I think just something to the effect of, "Such employees shall not have the right to..."
Something along those lines. Clarify, clean it up a little bit. It's, I don't want people, I don't want guys like me being played $10,000 or more to argue with you as to what that sentence means. We know what it means. But a judge may say, well, you have that "except" clause in there. It's like that Second Amendment, necessarily, never mind. Okay. Going on to page 17, and this is ignorance on my part, to a degree. We have classified employees, and I get the impression classified employees can be exempt or non-exempt. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What's the difference between exempt or non-exempt? I know the FLSA is the issue here. So we could have a classified employee who qualifies for overtime if he goes for more than 40 hours a week, and some would not qualify for overtime if they go more than 40 hours a week?
Yes.
Okay. How do we tell the difference between the two? Because I think classified employees, and I think the guys who, you know, it's, they're working on the street, and they, they go more, they're punching a time clock.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, and in my world, at least, if you have a guy like that, and he works 50 hours, you're paying him his 10 hours overtime, or flex time, or whatever the rules allow for at that point in time. So what's, how do we, what's, why do we have a difference between unclassified, classified, exempt, non-exempt?
Well, sir, you can be classified or unclassified.
Correct.
But then the exempt status follows the federal guidelines of, you know, let's say, an exempt employee must supervise at least two people or manage a program. Then you can call them exempt, like the HR generalist. She's in charge of a program or personnel policies, so she is exempt, where the technician does the day-to-day activities, and does not have any supervisory or program management, so they are not- where the technician does the day-to-day activities and does not have any supervisory or program management, so they are not exempt.
Thank you, I think, I think, um, you gave me the answer I thought was, I thought that might be the answer, and I'm glad you provided that, because it seems to me if we made, um, county managers, not, I'm sorry, not county managers, but division managers and managers and supervisors unclassified, it may to some degree take care of the exempt versus non-exempt. Would that be correct?
The-
You'd still have to be labeled exempt or non-exempt, but it would-
Yes, sir.
Create some clear logical lines between the two.
Well, the, the classified/unclassified would just mean that, um, that they would be exempt from parts of the personnel policies, the grievance process, the appeals process. Pretty much that is the only difference between the classified and the unclassified service here, sir.
Right. Okay, so, um, I'll leave that one alone now, sounds like you have it covered far better than I could ever possibly do, um, but I think-
Supervisor Moss, if I could, um, you know, we've, this is a, this is a section that we actually struggled with in the committee. Uh, and I pop my head in every once in a while, not all the time, but, um, we've had it to where, let's say we have a, um, this has to do with, are they eligible for overtime, or are they not eligible for overtime, basically? And we've had instances that we've had a department head go, "Well, jeez, you know, I'm gonna work this person a lot of time, and I don't want to pay him overtime, so let's make him exempt," out of the blue, and I don't think that's, that was fair. I don't think it was appropriate. So I had, I really struggled with this, I'm not sure there's a good application for it, if they took out 1.53 in its entirety, or had exempt employees, attorneys, engineers, managers, directors, or anybody in supervisory positions, you know, to coincide somewhat with your, uh, talk about, uh, classification and non-classified employees, and tied that together, I think it would be cleaner.
Yeah, and that's my, this is just my philosophy, and people in the board are free to take it or not. If you're a professional, or if you're a supervisor, um, you are exempt. Okay, you will work as many hours as needed to get the job done. If you're a data entry guy, if you're a construction worker, you're a 40-hour-a-week bloke, um, and that's a great guy to be, sometimes. But you, you get your overtime if you earn it, so that's where it comes down to. That's, was my worldview, and I just wanted to impart that there, so.
If, if that's philosophically is, is some direction that the, you know, that nobody has an objection to. Ken, do you see any problem with that?
No, sir, I don't. The, um, and if you notice on these, um, policies, there's that insert link there. Whenever we, we decided when we were doing these policies, if we referred to a law, we were gonna link that law into the policy, so as the employee was going down, instead of questioning and trying to look it up, all they would have to do is hit that link, and then they would go to the law, or the statute, or whatever we were referencing. So then it would give them a bigger explanation of what the exempt, non-exempt, or, as you'll see throughout the, um, policies, it'll give them a better definition without us writing every little criteria into the policies and procedures.
Right. And, and thank you, Mr. Coming, I do appreciate that. Uh, going on to page 18, um, 1.61C, uh, 1, um, about the layoff plan. I really do think if there's a layoff plan that needs to come to the board of supervisors, I think it has to carry the recommendation of the county administrator, um, but I really think it needs to come to the board of supervisors. And believe me, I am gonna be skipping past more pages now, more rapidly, because many of the comments are carried through. Going to page 22, um, there's a disposition of records, employee records, 1.81. Both A and C and D caused me some questions here. I've been involved in a few records requested cases in my time, generally as a person requesting the record. And, um, there's a phrase, "Other personal information shall be withheld without the employee's consent." Well, what's the definition of "other personal information"? Um, so that's kind of a broad catch-all. Um, I don't need to know the employee's social security number, date of birth, home address, telephone numbers. You're right, that's personal, and that's specifically spelled out. But what other type of information would be picked up by them? I mean, did the fact they got a paywa, pay raise, is that personal and private? I don't think so. Um, but it might, some people might consider that to be. Um, going on to paragraph C, um, we have the names, we have the, um, records that can be reduced, produced, and I like it. It's 1 through 5, that's very good. Um, but I'll give you some, and, and some examples of some of the cases I litigated back in when I was doing that. Um, my understanding is, and I won this in court, that the, um, awards and disciplinary records. If you've got commendations, that's disclosable. If you got, um, disciplined, that's disclosable. The investigation in between, either way, is not, but the end result is, so.
Excuse me Supervisor Moss?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I believe this is, is what can be given out over the phone without a records request. So we can give out dates of employment, job titles, salaries, but we can't confirm or give out anything else without a records request.
And, uh, that would help me a lot if we clarified C then, to say, "Over-the-phone information can be provided as follows." You know, that, or email information can be provided as follows. Anything else requires a formal records request, I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. D- Um, does reference to disciplinary action. I think we should be nice to it being released upon an FOI request. Uh, I think we should be nice to our employees and also throw in their accommodations. You know, if they've done good things, we should be releasable also. And then, um, additional information that does not come from public records, medical information, shall only be released with specific consent. And I was wondering why we collapsed D into those two separate and distinct categories, and why they weren't broken up into two categories? Because it seems to me, um, performance evaluations and disciplinary actions, et cetera, is one type of category, and then medical records is a completely separate category, and because no one in their right mind's gonna argue that's not other personal information. Um, going on to page 23, we discuss in paragraph I, a nominal fee. Um, who sets the nominal fee, and what are we describing as nominal? Like, $1 is nothing to me, but it might be a lot to somebody else. It's page 23, paragraph I.
I think, excuse me, sir, the nominal fee is like if we have to, someone wants a copy of their supervisory file, I think it's the cost of the paper, which I think we charge a nickel per page.
And, and I would like that to be more explicit, because again, against the minor changes versus nominal changes, your definition of nominal may be different from my definition of nominal, so.
It may be that, uh, all fees are regardless, if it's external fees, has to be set by the board.
Right. And that, whether it's a lead person or a, a, um, citizen off the street. Um, let's see here, that's fine, I, that's answered. This is just a language change on page 25, 1.91, where it says, "Employees who choose to bring their own personal property into the workplace may do so at their own risk." And it says, "And with the approval of the department head." Um, and I was thinking, and I think I may be being overly zealous here. I really think it should read something along the lines of, "And may only do so with the approval of the department head." Um, but that's just stylistic, I suppose. Page 26, paragraph D, 1.94D, "Employees cannot in any way accrue or bank break time for later use." I think the phrase should be inserted at the very end, or compensation should be put in there. Because you can use it, or you can be compensated for it, and we might want to clarify, you can't get compensated for it either. Page 27 regards outside employment, um, and I definitely have no problem with a county employee mowing grass on the weekends and making a few extra bucks and stuff like that. But if they're gonna do it, I think it needs to come to the board of supervisors for approval. Because I, and what I'm specifically targeting is if there's some employee who's running a construction business, or an architectural service, or, in the case of our county, since we have, our Mike Hendricks, our county engineer, things like that, that they come to us and tell us, "I own XYZ Corporation, and we build roads, so that way I can keep in my mind, if we have a road contract and I see their name pop up."
Isn't that part of the disclosure, though?
I believe it should be, yes. But this is actually them engaging in outside business, period.
Madam Chairman, could I make a suggestion on that? Like I said, I'm trying to, the philosophy would be to try to keep the board from direct approval on that. Uh, could it say, uh, I mean-
A report would be fine.
Shall, the county shall keep a file of all employees engaged, and they are required to fill out a form and get approval. And then, uh, those employees shall, shall be reported to the board of supervisors, or something along that line.
Yeah, it can be part of, again, part of your report, "I approve these employees. He runs a pest control business only on Saturdays," that's fine.
And then if, at any time you wanted to, shall be kept in, on file with the human resources director.
Sure.
And at any time you wanted to get a complete listing of outside employment, you could do that too. Okay?
Okay. On page 30, it's just language regarding reclassifications. I really think they need to be reported to the board of supervisors, so we know they've occurred. Same on page 31.
And possibly we could include the reporting requirements all encompassing and consistent to the board.
Sure, that, that will work. I just want to know, that's, that's it.
Uh, do you intend that all reclasses will be approved by the board supervisor, or just a report be given to you after the approval of the county manager?
I, I would view it as being approved by the board of supervisors. It would be part of the county manager's report, which we approve as part of our consent agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Now, on page 35, um, they talk about reporting overtime that employees accrue. I, this is just an idea I had, and it was just so I, it's like a spot check to running the, the wage planning of the county. But I think there might, the board of supervisors might appreciate a yearly or annual report on the overtime that's been paid to specific employees, so we know how's that working. Because if I see that employee X made 60 grand, I'm gonna call Mike and say, "You better hire someone. I don't want to pay employee X 60 grand anymore."
And, and Madam Chairman, uh, with the budget process, uh, we have a line item for overtime, and, uh, it shows, usually shows the percentage, and it's an estimate during the year. And those departments, like the sheriff's office and whatso, whoever, if they exceed that budget, they have to come before the board and ask for additional funds, which they have in the past. So that's one way, way, that we are currently doing that.
And, and that's very good, I'm glad you know that, and I will, to my shame, I think I missed that when I went through all those various line items you provided us, the many thousands of line items. I would just like to have a, an annual report, little memo. These departments had so many, so much dollars in overtime, so that I can know that ahead of time and realize, I have to, recorder's office is obviously understaffed, that they're spending 150,000 or 100,000 in overtime, which we could avoid.
It may be something, things like that, maybe something that could be outside of the merit rules, but I'd, I'd have to go, "Von, remind me to send that report."
Okay, thank you.
Bet.
Okay, page 37, 2.5A, um, there's a phrase that says, "But if employees can come and go freely, even though they must leave a telephone number where they can be reached or carry a cellphone or pager, the time can be excluded from hours worked." "Can," to me, means optional, and really should be, "shall be," or, in my view, should be. The time shall be excluded from the hours worked, not that it's a conditional "can." Is there a problem with changing that particular word? Okay.
On-call pay, if I'm not mistaken, is, uh, uh, if you're on-call, there's specific, uh, language on, in regards to that, if I'm not mistaken, Ken? And, uh, one of the things that we're, we do is, uh, to get away from that, we have something called- callback. Or, uh, mercy callback.
Yeah, and I think the on-call pay provision I was referring to intended to exclude those periods where the employee was free to come and go, um, and go their life about, even though they have a cellphone on there. I'm just saying the time, where it says the time can be excluded from hours work, we should say the ti, the time shall be excluded from hours work. If they're on the beach, having a couple Coors Lights, I'm not paying them, that's not even an option.
And I think on-call, uh, if I remember the last time I read it, it, on-call's the one that's restricted, correct?
Right.
Okay, and on-call says that if, if someone's movements or activities are so severely limited, the county, uh, you know, then they're subject to time and a half, correct?
Right, i- if their time is restricted where they cannot do something on their own, or if we give them a specific, a specific timeframe that they have to come back. But if they're just carrying a pager, then that is not necessarily on-call pay. I believe this language came out of a, um, lawsuit that we had, so I think that's where this language came from.
If you can look into the "can" versus the "shall" in that one sentence, I'd appreciate it. Um, I'm skipping past many pages, going to page 50, and this is more of just an observation regarding PTO accrual. Because when I tried to do the math on my own, I was absolutely floored. And if, by my rough math, and I'm getting this, per pay period, an employee gets eight hours of PTO, that's a full day. Am I right about that, if you begin? And then as you go on to your 15th year plus, you get 12 hours per pay period. And by my rough pencil math, that meant you get 24 to 36 days a week, or 24 to 36 days a year off. Um, and that's, I mean, the Marine Corps gets 30 days of leave per year, but they have the excuse they get shot at. So, so I'm, I was thinking that that PTO is very, very generous, so we might want to work, look at that. My personal view on that. Yes.
The accruals of the PTO have evolved over the years, and there were rhyme or reason at times when the accruals have changed. Now, in the current rules that we have, the PTO is actually a combination of sick time and vacation time. In, in other organizations, they are two separate, you know, pools. But at some point in time, in, in our history, in Mojave County, they've decided to merge them together and call it a PT, paid time off.
And I understand that, and I'll give you an example with my nitpicky law office. And I've been told that my nitpicky law office was one of the more generous employers. After three years of employment, you can have a grand total of 14 days off per year, and that can be vacation time or sick time combined. And where brand-new employees are getting double that here. It, this is not reflective of market reality when it comes to 24, 36, even combined, it's not even close. It's extraordinarily generous. Um, and I think we have great employees, but that's an awful lot of time to say you can take an entire month plus a week off, each and every year.
And Supervisor Moss, um, you know, one of the things that this group contemplated is taking a shot at modifying these, and we thought it'd be best left to the board of supervisors, because there's, a couple things that have to be decided when you modify these. And if you do decide to modify, well, what I would strongly suggest is, NICO puts out a report that shows all county, uh, PTO, uh, sick leave and benefits in that regard. And it's very comprehensive, it also, also shows the cities. Yeah, in keeping with this, I believe from a request from Supervisor Johnson, uh, we, because, uh, some counties do sick, some counties do PTO, some counties do a combination thereof, uh, we ask Supervisor Johnson, I believe, ask, uh, OMB to do a spreadsheet to show apples to apples, and it was, they did a very good job of it. So we could distribute that, so you could see how we stack up, uh, percentile-wise with the rest of the counties. Take a look at it, uh, the best comparison, obviously, is counties of like size. But you can take a look at all the counties and see what they do, and I'll send that out to you all.
I would, I would appreciate that very much.
The other thing is, and I, I apologize if you haven't gotten that in your hands yet, but we can certainly provide that, because I've got it on my computer. The other thing that's important to decide is if you do modify the, the PTO, uh, is it for new hires? That would be the easiest thing to do right away, or does it extend to the, uh, existing employees?
My, my take on it, and this is just my take on it off the cuff, I don't want to be unfair to anybody, so if there was a change, it only, would only, my personal viewpoint is it only be to new hires. Um, and the current system would stay in place for existing hires.
Or if you, you thought staff could make a recommendation to you?
Or, I would even, I'll take whatever information you're willing to give me, whatever recommendations to consider. Um, I just think that if, if, if your report you're gonna give me tells me that most counties are 24 to 36 days per year, I'm gonna think most counties are, they're not reflecting the real world that's out there. So, um, but I would like to see it, just so I have another data point.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get that to you.
Paragraph, page 12, paragraph K, um, the payment of the PTO at the end of separation. Again, 400 hours, 600 hours, whatever hours it may be, that's a lot of time, um, that we should be paying employees for. I would favor a "use it or lose it" policy, far more than writing a check.
I'm going to start using my PTO here, real quick.
You don't get any Supervisor Watson. On page sixty-two, where it says, D, the county administrator may place an employee on leave. Continuing the theme that we've been discussing earlier, if an employee's placed on leave, I would like to have a report of that. I don't need to take action, I just want to know. I'd settle, personally, I'd settle for an email on that, just to let you know we had to place this person on leave. Don't answer any questions. You know, if we refer at all to Bob Taylor at the Civil Department, just so I know and don't slip up and say something I shouldn't be saying.
Supervisor Watson? I'm sorry?
No, I, we're just looking where he's talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to be critical of the county giving employees time off to go vote. And then it occurred to me that we do the exact same thing in my office, and I believe most employers do. So I withdraw my knee-jerk criticism on that, it's actually a good thing. I'm going to be going very quickly here through this, trying to make sure I got everything. I think I've already talked about, because I saw some language deeper in here about this stuff doesn't apply to elected officials. I think we've already determined that we're going to throw a clause in there someplace along that line. Paragraph, or page seventy-seven, paragraph four point two A one. "The purpose of this conflict of interest requirements and guidelines is to supplement the Board of Supervisor's conflict of interest policy." I think there should be a line thrown in there that even though it's intended to supplement, it shall not contradict the Board of Supervisor's conflict of interest policy. Page seventy-nine, small paragraph V. It was my understanding that we had determined, or the Board had previously approved, that if a employee or an employee's relative owns three percent of a company, or less than three percent, it wasn't going to be reported. But that we would consider employees' relations in the aggregate. Because if my seven siblings and I each own two percent, I'm now at fourteen percent of the company. And if I throw my mother's, my brother's, my thirty-eight first cousins in there, the numbers can go very quickly.
Check on that? We can check on that?
Yeah, so page seventy-nine, little V. Because I would like the percentage of employees to be considered as an aggregate amongst family members.
Supervisor Moss, wouldn't it be easier just to request any ownership, no matter what percentage?
I think so, but I think that's the cleanest and easiest way of doing it. But that's what I was presented with, and so that's what I dealt with. I think any ownership, even one percent, should be reported.
I think it should be.
Yeah, I will tell you, I'm, my instinct is, if you come to me and say, "My brother-in-law, my grandfather, whatever, owns an interest in the company", my response was going to be, "Were they the low bid?" And I'm going to go with it.
And I just want to know.
I just want to know, right. I don't want to be said, "Why'd you give the contract to XYZ Construction? Didn't you know that their brother runs the maintenance department?" Well, no, I didn't, thank you for telling me that, now I look foolish. I hope they were the low bid. But the, so that's, this is just information purposes. Okay? Page eighty-three, confidentiality. I had two big concerns with this. The first was relatively minor, and I think we resolved it, but I think it should be included. Employees have the right to visit with the Board of Supervisors. If, you know, Joe Smith in the Roads Department, or someone in the Public Health Department wants to come and talk to me, they're allowed to. I think we need to clarify that in there. It's been clarified in other documents, but if we're really wrapping things in, that should be put in there.
Okay.
The next paragraph is D.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you there?
Sure.
What we need to do is take a look at the county administrators' policies and procedures that wasn't approved. There's some language that Supervisor Moss inserted in that policy that he's referring to. If we don't have it, Yvonne, can you get it to Ken?
And it doesn't have to be fancy, just a line saying-
You wrote it already.
Oh, there you go.
In there. So it talks about being able to discuss, meet and discuss with any individual.
Right, and the thing is, the county employees are taxpayers and they're voters, too. And they should be able to approach their elected officials, is what it comes down to.
I remember the language was in that document.
And I'm very flexible in whatever language is used, I just want to know that they have that right. Paragraph, or page eighty-three, paragraph D, the secret use of recording devices. And this is just me, I look at that, and, one, I don't like people who secretly record other people. I don't, I think it's bad manners. On the other hand, I don't think just because two county employees have a conversation, that that makes it a confidential conversation. I mean, a confidential conversation is between me and my priest, me and my lawyer, me and my doctor. It's not me and my supervisor, or me and my coworker. So I don't like the idea that we're prohibiting county employees from recording other county employees. If they feel the need to record, something must be going on. So I might want to have them make that recording. So that concerns me, paragraph D.
Now, if I can interrupt you on that one. Was there some state law that was governing this, this particular statement? Or was there some state law that allowed it? I remember, the reason I'm bringing this up is because of the language about one person has to know that the conversation's recording, and I thought that was in state law.
It's federal law, too.
Federal law?
And it only requires one person to know. So if I walk in here with a tape recorder in my pocket, fifty people in a secret conversation or a backroom conversation, I'm entitled to record. I don't think it's good manners, I would not do that. But I'm lawfully entitled to record everyone else in that room without them knowing about it. This is reversing it and saying that everyone in the room has to know about it before you do it.
So if this reflected state law, that would, or federal law?
Change it to reflect state or federal law. I think Arizona and federal law are the same.
It's an eavesdropping law, you're not supposed to record two people having a conversation.
I can't bug your phone line, but if it's my phone line, I'm allowed to do it. So, yeah, so that's correct. This goes to that same issue, page eighty-five, paragraph sixteen. It talks about it being a disciplinary or prohibited conduct to violate the county confidentiality policy. I have no problem with that, especially in regards to employee records. But with that eavesdropping ban, I wasn't comfortable with it. So if that one goes away, I don't, I don't have an issue. This is the tail end on page eighty-six, this tail end to prohibited conduct. "I know we had an ordinance which we passed regarding making statements in an open meeting to the Board of Supervisors which was less than truthful by a county employee." I think that some variation of that should probably be stuck in there, just so they know. Because our ordinances are not yet indexed. And so they would, once it's buried in the paper, I think it's only by date. So how would the county employee know? That's fine. I think I'm almost done. It'll make everyone know that I've just passed the page one hundred mark, and I'm still looking, because I don't think I have much in the way of any changes. Very disgust that. Under travel procedures, it talks about county personnel.
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, page one twenty-two, see how far I went?
One twenty?
One twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-two. And it talks about county personnel throughout, which is a switch, because previously in the document, they had talked about county employees. I think stylistically, maybe we should go from personnel back to employees. But that's just a stylistic comment on my part.
Now, I wrote an administrative policy, I believe, that said that our county travel policy does not impact, does not affect elected officials.
I'm not concerned about that, I'm concerned about the stylistic use of employees versus personnel.
Thank you.
Because the first, pages one to one twenty-one, I think, used the word employee. And then at one twenty-two, we start talking about personnel. So it's, that's the issue there.
Got you.
That's a good question. I mean, maybe that's why there's a difference there. If so, we should define personnel as a defined term to include employees and volunteers. That could solve the problem. I just saw, it was just, again, it was just stylistic. It's like we, all of a sudden, you're using one term, we stopped and started using another, and I didn't have an explanation for it. So maybe a defined term would take care of that. Because I know there's volunteers who frequently drive in county vehicles, you know, so it happens. And I think that I have finished my comments. I would just echo what Supervisor Angus had said at the beginning. I do think a more traditional business model, where employees are at will, would be more effective, and more cost-effective, and more efficient long-term for the county. On the other hand, I'm not as comfortable with HB twenty-five seventy-one. We'll get legal opinions and all that, and get that worked out. In the meantime, assuming my lack of discomfort is borne out, I'd like to target at least the supervisory roles for being unclassified employees, professionals and supervisors. The rank-and-file, you know, they're good, they work hard. But the guys who are in, making the big bucks, being in charge of things, being lawyers, being whatever, engineers, whatever, those guys should be, and ladies should be, in my opinion, unclassified. And that's all I have, for now.
I guess we need to hear from the other supervisors, if they have any comments?
Go ahead.
No, well, I, first, I apologize, I had an emergency call I had to take, but, so go ahead Supervisor Watson.
I was going to defer to Supervisor Bishop.
No, go ahead, you might answer a lot of my queries.
Starting off with page, page three, very, very first. And I may have the wrong copy, but "Introduction to Section B: Powers and Duties, County Administrative Responsibilities." The first sentence is okay, but then we get to the second sentence. "The county administrator shall have the authority to implement any individual exceptions to these personnel policies and procedures without seeking prior approval from the Board of Supervisors." That seems a little bit concerning to me.
That goes against the spirit of what I was talking about. And I am very sorry Supervisor Watson, that I actually missed it.
I can't believe you missed that.
I thought I had read each and every line of this document, which tells you that nobody is perfect.
Then, then, and I have to share that with my people that work with me in my office. They really came to bear some of these items forth. So Regina, thank you very much. She's gone through it completely several times. My other question on page three. "The Human Resources Director is responsible. In the event of a disagreement between the department head and the Human Resources Director in that regards to these policies, the issue shall be brought before the county administrator for final determination." If there's no determination at that point, shouldn't it go to the Board?
When it's a disagreement between department heads and the county administrator can't resolve it, yes, I think that it should be brought to the Board. If it's that important, I think we should know about it.
Yeah.
And could I get a clarification on that?
Sure.
Actually, I believe it is important to have a boss for my people, not, not a group of bosses. And I do believe it's also, on the other hand, important to notify the Board of any of these, these issues, like Supervisor Moss, and you have pointed out. In the spirit of what we've been doing and the direction that we've been going, it's, it's been acceptable to notify you either through a report or by placing it on my consent agenda. And if you have an issue with those items, then you'd bring it up in front of me, and we would, we would resolve it. But I would prefer you all didn't get in between. You know, if you wanted to give, provide me with direction otherwise, then I would carry that out, but not get in between my directors and myself.
No, this is not to get, my comment wasn't to get in between you. It's just, if it got to the point where your decision couldn't be made.
We could carry that through in the notification, like what we had talked about previously, and I would keep you all informed of all activities.
Yeah.
And Mike, and to make a pun, there is a boss, one boss, it's called the Board of Supervisors. It's in the name, B-O-S, boss.
True, true.
And Regina pointed out one great portion on page four. Sentence B. "Propose and proclamate new policies and amendments thereto." Wouldn't it be easier to say, "Put into effect by formal public announcement or decision by the Board"? Just a language change?
If we could strike promulgate in that sentence. I think it's HR directors charged now with the new instruction to propose.
That'd be fine. And going back to page fifty, when we're looking at the accrual hours of, or the years of continuous service. I certainly agree with Supervisor Moss that the new hires should be taking a very in-depth look at what other, what the mean is nationally. But I would like to further state that I'd like to make sure that the existing employees that we have now will continue under this program, because that's the promise that we've made. And that's all I have.
And if I may, Madam Chair? I do agree with you Supervisor Watson, that any change in PTO would have to be limited only to new hires. I mean, we did create an agreement, and it's important that we, as a county, we, as a government, the government must keep its word. I mean, is what it comes down to, whether it's local government or federal government, the government must keep its word.
Thank you Supervisor Moss. And those are mine.
Okay, I guess I'm up. Alrighty, on page three, there's just a little minor change in the introduction, Section B. You go about midway down, "Any minor, non-substantive amendments to these personnel policies and procedures affecting all covered employees." I'd like to change that all to "any." It's pretty minor, but it does have a change in the meaning. And then I was just wondering, do we need to define major or substantive policy changes in more detail so the Board is kept more informed?
But the, I think what you talked about, and we'd stay consistent, I'm sorry Supervisor Moss.
No, no, you can go ahead, Mike, I think you're-
To stay consistent, it would be, any, any changes would be reported on my county administrator report to the Board. Or I would be required to, on sensitive issues, to report to an email to the Board of Supervisors. On any, any personnel issues. So they, and I can see, that, that makes perfect, perfect sense. The last thing that a supervisor needs is to be blindsided by somebody, the outside, or somebody knowing more information about the organization than you all do. And for you all to be able to, if you do take exception to any of my activities or actions, that you all can address it with me personally.
You want to say something, Yvonne?
You had to get a new microphone.
Just to point a reference, I wanted to make Supervisor Moss's earlier statements. And for clarification, you requested that all changes to the merit rules come back to the board. Is, is that correct? And I think that's the point where Jean is addressing now.
That, that's correct. All changes come back to the board. Minor changes can be put into the county administrator's report, where we would review and approve them as part of the consent agenda. The major changes would probably require more upfront and direct review and approval of the board. But at, at minor changes, every change must come to us. How the county administrator brings it to us would be a case-by-case basis.
Okay, on page 18. Wait, Steve, you already addressed that, so we'll go on. Page 20, number two at the top of the page, shall be allowed to re-enroll in the health plan without a waiting period. I believe there's a new law that eliminates those waiting periods. Does anybody have input on that?
Supervisor Bishop, HR took that into consideration, the new changes, and I believe reflected that. What was it? It dropped the waiting period, if you can help us out, actually did change on, on being eligible? I think it's in A where they talk about. So on the standard, I, I believe the difficulty staff is having is, on the standard waiting period, we used to have a waiting period of six months, and it's addressed in a different section. So when it, it's referring generally to the waiting period, but I believe it's, we dropped that waiting period to?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Okay.
So, just so we, do we need to, is it necessary to reinstate that or clarify that in the section? Is that what you're looking for?
Mm-hmm. Right. We, we may have to change the summary plan document if we change, right, if. Right, anything that affects our benefits, that we waive benefits, will have to change in the summary plan document.
But we're not changing it. It's still 30 days. You know, that, that they're, so if a person is recalled, they might not receive the same rate of pay they earned at the time, I'm sorry, they, they are re-enrolled in the health plan within the normal waiting period. So the normal waiting period is 30 days.
Right.
Can we say normal 30-day waiting period and just get, get on with the next comment? Or is that gonna hurt us?
Well, I think it's related to COBRA. Right, this is, well, if you're on COBRA, this is relating if you're on COBRA and then you get reinstated.
Sounds like it's something we need to check out.
Yeah, we'll have to research that and get back to you.
Okay. All right, then, on page 30, I, I just have a question on, on the auditing. In, in the case of the HR director or, or the county administrator that needs to have an audit that involves them, what would our policy be for something like that? Really, nothing's written, written on that, so it was just something that.
I'm under contract.
So there doesn't have to be any, any written.
This position audit, I, you all write, write my job description.
And the HR director as well?
No. I, I believe the position audits would be across the board, and all department heads, if the board so chose to do a classification compensation study, all department heads would be included in that. And if you wished, I, my position also would be included in that, but it's, it's up to you, it wouldn't be necessary because I'm on contract.
Yeah, it was just not clear to me when I read it, so. Okay. Luckily, Steve covered a lot of the things that. Page 33, number F1, additional pay increases above 5% of the pay range minimum. Certain pay levels should be approved by the Board of Supervisors, so I'm just wondering what that level should be.
Give me just a minute here.
Okay, page 39.
Supervisor Bishop, what are you, what are you suggesting?
I was just wondering, additional pay increases above 5%. Should, should we have a cutoff period where it has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors?
It's up to the board.
I, I think, this is just me, but I think so. It goes back to that long-term budget planning. It's a, there's details out there that we have to form, which are special details. And I'm really not sure exactly what that is, but if there were a special detail that's gonna blow a department's budget by 5% or more, I think we'd want to do, I think we'd want to hear about it.
And it's, it does say, provided the supporting funding exists and is confirmed in writing by the financial services director or they're designated. So the funding has to be identified, that they have the ability to do that, whatever is approved, or it doesn't get approved regardless. If there is a special detail, the funding would have to be there.
And I think what Supervisor Bishop is suggesting, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's one of those items you'd like to see presented on the consent, to another consent, the manager's report to the board.
Exactly.
To that we know that it came into place.
Just, just so that we have an idea of our staffing and what's going on.
Philosophy-wise, everything, all, all, any action that's done by me would be on my, my activity report.
We don't need every action, just the ones involving spending money.
Got, got you.
Oh, look at the pages go by, this is nice. Okay, this is regards to PTO hours, we're already looking at that. Um, page 69. This is just something I wanted to throw out there, the Employee Illness Bank, used to be called EIB, or maybe still does. It's no longer in practice, from what I've been told. Is there any interest in, in getting that up and working again?
Supervisor Bishop, we still have some employees with EIB in their bank, so that's why we left this policy in. I think there's like 30 employees that still have this, and so this was written for those 30 employees.
But we're not actively doing it anymore? We've decided to do away with that program?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Was there a reason for that? Was it a program that wasn't working well for us?
When we combined the sick time and vacation time and made it paid time off, I believe that's when it was changed.
Okay.
Basically, just to, just to build on this, EIB, if I'm not mistaken, was sick leave, and what we're trying to do is the most economically feasible way to get this off the books, and this is what this policy proposes to do.
Okay, so it's eventually going to just go away?
That's the plan, yes.
Okay, page 100. At the top of the page, 4.100, the Personnel Commission of five individuals shall be appointed by the Board of Supervisors. District Four recently had two individuals in 2013. And now it seems to be that we can only have one, one person for each supervisor, so.
When we went to, when we went to five supervisors, you know, we tried to take a look at the commissions and the appointments, and what we believed is we wanted to keep the number of, of people in the commissions at a reasonable amount. So there's a couple of reasons for doing that. One is, the more people you have, the harder it is to get them all to come to the meeting to where they can schedule it. The other is, we wanted a reasonable amount so that every supervisor had at least one commission. So five was a good number. You know, five was a, five individuals was a good number, and it was actually our intent that each supervisor would nominate one person from their, their particular district. But it wasn't well stated, and that's where the confusion came in. So it's something that we probably didn't look back at the personnel policies to change, but that would be our intent and our recommendation to the board, to have one person appointed by each individual supervisor from their district.
Okay, that makes sense to me, but I had two, and, and then when I tried to replace one that was, was taken, then, then I found out I only had one, so.
That was back when we had three, three supervisors, so there were, I think, I don't remember, how many people were in the original commission?
We had three when the board changed from three members to five, because we were down two members. And then when we were trying to replace the two new ones, I believe Supervisor Moss and Chairman Angus provided two new ones to get up to five, but we still had the two from four because of the transition.
But they ended up falling in, inside one particular supervisor, two of them ended up falling inside one particular supervisor boundary?
Yes, during the transition. They both lived in District Four.
Something that we didn't foresee.
If I could on that point, Madam Chairman and Supervisor Bishop, when it comes to term of office, why don't we just throw a phrase in there that each of these individuals' terms, in addition to the reasons you spell out, where they missed more than three meetings, et cetera, when this term of the supervisor who appointed them ends? Because that way, it's not very messy when it comes to transitions. You serve as long as your supervisor who appointed you serves, essentially.
That's something we could use throughout all of our commissions.
I'm thinking that might be a good idea. Somebody might not, some, whoever replaces me 50 years down the road, may, may want to have their own people in place.
Excuse me Supervisor Moss, I believe the Arizona statute says that they're in there for four years, and so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I will verify the statutes to see if we can do that.
And that, I believe you're correct, at least on, I think, planning and zoning, but I think they may be silent as to other boards and commissions.
Is it, is it four years even if they're appointed midterm, mid-election term?
They, they fit, they serve out the remainder of the term, and then they're, could be reappointed for another four.
So it would be exactly what Supervisor Moss said, that they would serve the term of the supervisor?
They're, they're staggered, they're not.
Okay.
Right. The start date, they're staggered with start dates.
Is that by our design or by?
I believe that's the statute, but I will verify in the statutes. Thank you.
I was gonna say, is that by our self-inflicted wound or by statute?
Okay, page 141, 6.3C. Very, very last sentence. Employees should not assume any electronic communications are private and confidential and should assume that any of their activity on the system can be monitored, accessed, reviewed, or, and disclosed. Just wondering, does that exclude the Board of Supervisors? And if so, should, should that be inserted there?
What's the thoughts?
Right now, it doesn't really specify that the Board of Supervisors are exempt from, from number C. My question is, are, is the board exempt? And if the board is exempt, should that be stated?
If I could further elaborate Supervisor Bishop, I think it maybe should be elected officials. And I think what Supervisor Bishop may be getting to is, is this paragraph C referring to the county monitoring employees? Or is it referring to just good old-fashioned, common sense hackers could get into your system? So which one is, what's the thrust of the paragraph C there?
It is, if I was gonna guess, it's, it's everybody. But, so if we need to exempt those supervisors and elected officials, it needs to be inserted.
But, but the thrust of paragraph C is, are we telling employees that Steve Moss or Mike Hendricks can get onto the computer with Nate's assistance and monitor what you're doing with it? Is that what the intent is behind paragraph C is to tell them we could do that to the employees if we chose to?
Philosophy is that anything on their computer is county.
Property.
Property.
Okay.
And so the appropriately authorized individuals, which is, if you, Steve, came to me and said, I want all the information on a certain individual's computer, I'd provide it for you.
And, and by the way, I don't, but.
But that's, that's the intent.
But the, the, I see what Supervisor Bishop is saying, because that means theoretically, I, Steve Moss, would have the power to monitor Matt Smith's communications at the county.
He shouldn't be able to do that.
I should not be able to do that, because I might give it to some of my criminal defense friends, and Matt Smith might be very happy to know that I can't do that.
Well, and I believe this language came from the consortium, the IT Manager Consortium that Nathan belongs to, that a group of the counties brought this, and they're all using the same standard language. But we'll have to check with Nathan McDaniel's to verify that piece.
I, I think we need to clarify that it doesn't include elected officials or supervisors or other elected officials.
Or information otherwise protected by confidentiality laws like.
Yes.
Attorney-client confidence and things like that.
And just a little clarification and.
Yes, good point.
On page 149, under definitions. Basically, I just had a question, there's been some moving around on the top floor, and I, I just wonder if it should be clarified, who's in charge of the clerk's suite? Since there, there's the clerk of the board, the Board of Supervisors, District One and Four, and the county administrator, when there's a conflict, who, who takes care of the offices? I mean, who, who do we go to if we want to move things around or change things? Who's in charge up there?
Me.
With the suites?
It'd be me.
Okay.
Good with me, it just wasn't clear, so I didn't know.
Well, technically, it's the Board of Supervisors. They're your buildings, but I administer them for you.
That's all I have. I am pretty surprised to hear, I really have nothing to say. I, I'm more of a, the big picture, and when we get more into, so, so my big hot topics, like, which is PTO and things like that. But I think this is, it was a really, really good start. Thank you very much for, for going over it and being patient and meeting and doing all of it. I, we really appreciate it. And is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I, I certainly appreciate this, and this has been very enlightening. I believe staff has got a sufficient feel for the, the board's philosophy. And one of the things that really, really, really is, gives me a, a good feeling is this does show what excellent work the, the county staff, the board that put this together did, that there were very minor changes, some. that there were very minor changes, some philosophical changes, but basically, it's a, it's a solid, very well-written document, and I've got to give them a tremendous amount of credit. Ken, you, and everybody sitting out there in the audience, thank you so much, and HR did a fantastic job pulling all this together. I can't tell you how much work Marcia did and how awesome she was in the meetings, pulling everything together. It's just incredible. But thank you all, great job.
Thank you, Ken, and, and everybody, thank you. Okay, anyone else want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you to not only the employees, I'll echo Mr. Hendricks, but I'll also want to say thank you for Chairman Angus, for having this wonderful idea, where I didn't have to shop this around to a dozen different county department heads and go through this all individually. Thank you very much.
Okay, Supervisor Watson? That's it? Okay, thank you very much, we're adjourned.
Yay.